Special City Council meeting. And why don't we, we'll get the show on the road.
Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach held Tuesday, April 13th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call and we're live. Councilmember DeLorey.
Present.
Okay, good evening, folks, and welcome to a special City Council meeting.
Vice President McGinnis.
Present.
President Bendo.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden and Deputy Corporation Counsel Richard Barrios. We'll have a salute to the flag.
And I'm going to ask Deputy Corporation Counsel Rich Barrios to lead us.
All right, hands over hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I guess before we get started tonight, I just want to acknowledge we have some dignitaries that are going to be joining us in the meeting tonight. We have Mike Ianelli from Senator Chuck Schumer's office. We have Kathleen Rice, our Congresswoman from the House of Representatives. We have New York State Deputy Comptroller Elliot Auerbach. We have New York State Senator Todd Kaminsky, New York State Assemblywoman Missy Miller. We have Gabriela Castilio from Nassau County Executive Laura Curran's office. And we have Nassau County Legislature Denise Ford is joining us as well. So that's quite a VIP lineup. And I'm sure that you may be wondering why all those important people are here. So I guess I should start by saying tonight, tonight's going to mark the start of some incredible body of work, some important stuff that we're going to be undertaking here in Long Beach if this is approved. And before we really get to the meat and potatoes of it, I guess I'm going to give you a little bit of about a minute's worth of background here of how we got to where we are. So just under 14 months ago, we introduced Donna, Donna Gaden, to the community as our new city manager. And as we were speaking to Donna during the recruitment process, we made it clear to her that a primary responsibility that she would have while she's here would be to analyze and address the city's dire financial situation. And quite frankly, that's what she's done. She's been fierce, tireless, and quite frankly uncompromising about addressing the city's financial challenges. And anybody who works with Donna knows she tells it like it is and pulls no punches and take it from somebody who talks to her probably six times a day. But to be quite honest, after years of things happening in smoke-filled back rooms, that's exactly what the residents of Long Beach want. They want demonstrable facts and clear action going forward. So tonight Donna is going to walk us through the particulars of this major endeavor we will be voting on. And it's basically to approve contracts with outside firms that are going to objectively guide our financial recovery. So if this is approved, the road ahead is going to be long. It's going to be challenging. But the simple fact is simply acknowledging the reality of our situation and the challenges we're facing and getting down to the business of addressing them is a critical first step that needs to be undertaken. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Donna.
Thank you, President Bendo. The first thing, I'm glad you brought up why you brought me here. One of the things that I have received from the council, and we've talked about it on several occasions, that this council no longer wants to kick the can down the road. A lot of decisions have been made in years past, and I'm not saying that those decisions weren't the proper decisions at that particular time. However, no one probably ever thought about what the outcome would be several years down the road. And so now we're down the road and we are approximately $500 million in debt in long-term liabilities. What the, if people, I have been saying this all day, if you look at the 2019 audit, it showed that in long-term or actually in liabilities and liabilities for everyone to know are obligations that have to be paid. It was $311 million. Ina Resnick, our comptroller, and I have been looking at all of this. And then we received the Haberman case. So when you add up the $131 million to it, we're close, plus some other things that have come up, we're close to being a half a billion, $500 million. And we only have a budget of $83 million or $84 million. So that's like you have maxed out all your credit cards to the limit and your credit card debt is higher than the money that you bring in. That analogy, I want people to remember that because that analogy will be used throughout the night. In doing so, we, I knew that we would balance the budget. We would be moving forward. However, we needed to get control of the long-term debt. And in doing so, we, the council and I have agreement on two firms. One, M3, and O'Melvyn &amp; Myers. M3 is a financial company. O'Melvyn &amp; Myers are a law firm. I'm going to ask each one of the firms to introduce themselves and to give a quick overview of what we're looking at doing. But the goal is that Long Beach will survive. There are rumors out there that what we're trying to do is restructuring, so Long Beach will not survive, we will be absorbed. That is not the intention of myself, nor is the intention of this council. What we're doing is we're stop kicking the can down the road, identify what we have to pay and figure out how we're going to pay it. So on that note, I would like to introduce M3. Mo, you're on, okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for allowing me, thank you Donna for allowing me a few minutes to speak. M3 Partners is a financial and restructuring advisory firm based in New York City. We work with companies and organizations, including municipal organizations, to work through challenges such as the ones you're facing. I'm the managing partner of the firm. Senior professionals of my firm have worked on various restructurings from a financing standpoint, including the city of Detroit, various projects in Puerto Rico, and the U.S. Virgin Islands. I'm going to lead this engagement. And personally, I also sit on the board of NIFA, which is the Nassau InfraFinancing Authority. Donna?
Yes. So Maria, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, Donna. Hi, this is Maria De Canza from O'Melvyn &amp; Myers. O'Melvyn is a law firm with offices internationally and here in New York City. I'm a partner in the Restructuring Group at O'Melvyn in the New York office. I'm also a lifetime Long Island resident. We in the Restructuring Group at O'Melvyn have experience in many municipal settings and in corporate restructurings where we advise clients on how to move forward and look at their liabilities and their assets and determine the best way to ensure that they are paying their debts as they come due and they have long-term viability and sustainability. We are currently working for the government of Puerto Rico. We represent the Puerto Rico Electric Utility and Water and Sewer Authority in their restructurings. And I worked with the city of Hartford a few years ago in their restructuring. We're very proud of O'Melvyn as a group. Our restructuring group is creative, we're innovative, we're consensus builders, and we're very much looking forward to working with Long Beach. My partner, John Rappasardi, is on as well, so he could introduce himself as well.
Hi. Thank you, Maria. I'm John Rappasardi. I am the Chair of the Restructuring Group at O'Melvyn. I don't think there's much said as to what Maria just said about what we've done in terms of representing clients in restructuring matters, including the governor of Puerto Rico, where I've been Lead Counsel for the last five years. And I've been in the practice for 40 years, representing a whole variety of companies in distress and also governmental entities. I've been involved representing the government of California in the PG&E Chapter 11 case. And I represented President Obama's Auto Task Force in restructuring of General Moses and Chrysler. And as Maria said, we have a very well experienced team in terms of dealing with issues that the city is facing now. And I would say that we are, you know, very familiar with crisis situations and situations that need to be dealt with creatively and trying to minimize the time necessary to achieve a restructuring in the most efficient way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Was someone going to say something?
Sure, Donna, I was just going to say that as you mentioned, it's Maria again, we're, we here, we at O'Melvyn and M3, we're here to build on the work that Donna, the city manager and the comptroller has done to get the city's finances in order. We bring to the table an independent outlook based on decades of experience in helping troubled municipalities and companies in these types of situations and really looking at and exploring options for the city. In situations like this, those options include many things. There's no one path, there's not even one right path. We're going to look at what paths are available to the city and what the best way to proceed is. And that could be a refinancing or reprofiling of debts, negotiating consensual modifications, things to maximize revenues, including maximizing any county, state, or federal aid or other resources that those entities might have for the city, and how to really use the revenues and the resources that the city has available to the benefit of the people of Long Beach. We are looking at all situations, and as I said, there's no one right path. If necessary, we could resort to an in-court option, but that's something that is a tool in the process, not a goal or the, by means, only one path forward. We're not here with any kinds of preconceived notions. We want to look at the situation objectively and try to design a holistic solution for the city.
Thank you, Maria. One of the things Senator Kaminsky has to get off, and so I had, because he has been helping, helping myself every step of the way and talking to the comptroller's office, I want to ask him to go ahead and speak because I know he has to hang up.
Donna, are you able to, are you able to see and hear me?
We can hear you, can't see.
All right, I got all dressed up for nothing. Just want to let the viewers and the residents of Long Beach know that the state has an important role to play here, ensuring that Long Beach has the funds to make these hires so that they can have the experts guiding them along this journey to figure out how to handle this massive debt. So what I've been doing is speaking with the State Financial Restructuring Board, which is an entity under the Governor's Division of Budget. Some of you may remember that a few years ago, they authorized the city to get grants of up to $5 million to help it with its continuing mission of becoming more transparent and financially solvented on stable fiscal footing. I think that spending some of that money on retaining these top-level experts is certainly a worthy goal. You know, these shouldn't be one-shot expenditures, but should help Long Beach get on that firm footing, and that's what these firms have expertise in doing. First, handling the debt, figuring out how to do that, and then helping Long Beach figure out a financial plan as we move forward. And so it is my hope that this spring, the State Financial Restructuring Board will have a meeting. It has not met yet since the COVID pandemic, but we do expect it to have a meeting this spring. And we hope that one of the items that it will authorize is the state to be able to help Long Beach retain these experts by providing the funds to do so. I have very positive conversations with individuals who work at the board about that. But of course, it is that board's decision to make. They will have to have a public meeting in which to do that, and that is what we hope to be the result. Of course, any other way to get state funds to help Long Beach deal with some of these issues is important, but we are dealing on a massive level. So whether, you know, we're able to do $1 million here for a water restructuring project or to help build the park, these are all important. We continue to work on that. But this is of such a really gargantuan level that real professionals who've dealt with these crisis situations could be brought in to help advise the city. So the city retaining these services and confronting this head-on is important, and it is my role to help try to provide the funds, one of my roles anyway, to help the city retain these experts. And I will continue to advocate as diligently as I can for that. And whatever the city needs to help get through this crisis, I hope to be a representative that could help the city along and help our residents come out with a stronger, more vibrant community, because this is not only a community I represent, but also one in which I live in and raising my children. So I appreciate you allowing me to say that and having me here tonight.
Thank you very much, Senator. One of the things that I do want to stress to everybody that's listening, there's a difference between the budget and our long-term liabilities. The budget, when we look at this, we are not looking to do, to affect the budget in the sense where we're doing service cuts or we're doing layoffs. We're looking at the long-term liabilities that the city has. Shortly, they will, the team will show a slide to show you what are long-term liabilities. So again, where people are saying the city is going to have a massive layoff, no, that's not what we're talking about. The city is going to start cutting services. That's not what we're talking about. We are talking about any type of long-term liability. President Bendo, did you want to say something before we continue?
I think, well, now might be a good opportunity if any of our people from the other government entities that have joined us, if they have any remarks they'd like to say from the state or federal government or the county.
I think Melissa Miller has a hand up.
Missy Miller.
Okay, yes, all right, I can.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Obviously, I would like to hear more of, you know, this presentation and exactly, I have the preliminary information, but I'm certainly interested in hearing what's to be said. And obviously, you know, my role, as Senator Kaminsky said, from the state will be to do what we can to support this. You know, the hard-working residents and taxpayers here are, you know, innocent, and we want to protect their interests. We want to do what we can to make this work. And of course, I will do what I can to help that. And maybe I'll have more to say after I've heard the whole presentation.
Okay, great.
And one more thing, I do thank the, this board and certainly Donna for the mindset of not wanting to kick the can forward. I do appreciate that.
Yeah.
Sorry, Congresswoman Rice just got unmuted too.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, well, thank you so much for including, you know, Todd and myself and other elected officials in the call. I'm interested in getting as much information as possible because I want to be as helpful as possible. We worked really, really hard in the American Rescue Plan to make sure that there was state and local aid in that bill that can be used for COVID offenses and lost revenue. The money that you, that the city of Long Beach is scheduled to get is just a drop in the bucket compared to the half a billion dollars in liabilities that the city has. But I'm looking forward to hearing from the two consultants about what the plan is that they're looking to put together and to see if there's any way that me and my role as a member of Congress can help the city of Long Beach. I was so glad to hear our great city manager say that the plan was not to just kind of fall under the auspices of, you know, the larger town of Hempstead and have the city of Long Beach go away. It's critical that we figure out a way out of this hole. And whatever I can do to be helpful, I'm more than happy to do whatever I can. And thank you for your invitation. And I will mute myself now and listen to all of you smart people come up with ways to get out of this hole. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Congresswoman. Denise, did you want to say something?
I will hold my remarks till after the presentation because I am interested in what's possible solutions or what advice they may be able to offer us. And, you know, I commend all of you for facing this head-on. And Donna, thank you very much for the hard work that you put into this. It hasn't been easy for you since you've been on board, and especially our new council members too. So it's the pandemic and now this. So I am interested to see how we move forward with this, and then I will probably comment afterwards. But thank you, John. Thank you for doing this.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like people are sort of waiting for more information. So why don't we, why don't you continue on?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Donna. Can you hear me? If we can put up the summary of liability slide, Donna or Dave, that would be great.
Okay. Give Dave just one moment, he's going to put it up.
Thank you. So just in relation to some of the comments that the dignitaries just made, I want to be clear on one thing, which is we're not, we're not here today to present a plan for how to deal with all of this. That will come later, after we begin our work and complete our diligence and come up with the different options with pros and cons around which paths to take. What I did want to frame for the meeting and the attendees today is the total level of liabilities, long-term liabilities facing the city. There's bond indebtedness that's accumulated to $128 million. The Haberman litigation judgment was $131 million. That could, subject to approval of an offset resolution today, could be reduced to, by about $20 and a half million, which is certainly a good step, but in the big scheme of things, a drop in the bucket. So that's $131 million. And then you have other post-employment benefit-related liabilities of about $140 million. In addition to that, there are various other liabilities, compensated absences, pension liabilities, separation pay, et cetera, that are $29 and a half million for compensated absences and about $36 million of various other liabilities. Now here, as Maria indicated before, it's very, very critical to note that the exercise we are undertaking is specifically designed not to impact the ongoing operating services of the town. That is a clear mandate from both the City Council and the city manager and comptroller, and that's a key issue. We are focused on the long-term liabilities, and there, I won't repeat what Maria mentioned about the various tactics we're going to use, but we're carefully and methodically going to go through this process, look at options around each of these obligations that the city has, be extremely careful to ensure that it does not impact the day-to-day operations of the city. And I think questions were raised or comments were made earlier about the city of Long Beach getting absorbed by somebody else. That is simply not on the cards. So we want to be very, very clear about that and ensure that this is a project designed to use a series of paths from renegotiation, refinancing, consensus building, all of the above, and some combination of help and aid from various other parties. And we've heard the key stakeholders in terms of representatives from different levels of government express their willingness to help, which we've already observed. So Donna, let me stop there and pass it on to you or to O'Melvyn.
We can pass it on to Maria or John from O'Melvyn.
Go ahead, John.
Oh, what I was just going to say was that the emphasis here in terms of this process is trying to achieve consensus. And as Maria, Maria can go over the various options that we're evaluating, you know, trying to achieve a consensual agreement among all of the, you know, different buckets of liabilities we're looking at is certainly desirable and most efficient. It doesn't rule out an in-court proceeding at the end of the day, but as we said, that's a tool of last resort. We're looking to bring consensus to the process, and hopefully the parties that hold each of these debt obligations will be cooperative and work with us in being creative and coming up with solutions to help the city adjust this debt, which, as Donna alluded to, is just simply too much in terms of its sheer volume and size. It needs to be adjusted in some sort of fashion that makes it affordable for the city to carry over the long term. Maria?
Yeah, and I would just point out that although many of these liabilities are things that have to be paid and are able to be paid over time, the magnitude of them impacts the annual budget. And without a holistic solution to address the long-term liabilities, the city ends up in a situation where it has a more difficult time addressing the short-term liabilities. And so it's very important and it is the correct step for the city to be taking now to look at these long-term liabilities and to come up with a plan to address them.
I also want to make note that if the audit for 2019 is on the website, if anybody would like to look, this is what we have as long-term liabilities as of today. If you look at the one item, compensation time PBA, that $800,000 wasn't on there last year, but that is not, that $800,000 did not happen in one year. So as we're doing this exercise, there is a possibility that this amount may increase as we're going through to find out if there are any other long-term liabilities that we were not aware of at the time. So I encourage anyone watching to go back and look at the audits because the audits will tell you, the liabilities have always been in the audits, the long-term liabilities. When the new audit comes out in a few weeks, you will, that ends for June 30th, I'm sorry, June 30th, 2020, you will see the long-term liabilities or the entire liability section in there. So it is, I want everybody to realize that even though it may go down tonight by 20, it may go up later because we have identified something else that may not have been identified in prior years. But it is a prior-year liability. Okay, Mo, did you want to add anything else to this?
No, I, look.
We want to make sure that everybody understands exactly what we're doing so that people will not walk away saying they're going to merge, they're going to cut services, which we said we have not, they're going to lay off people, which we have not, we have not said we are, we're not, that's not the intentions. We're not looking at day-to-day. This is our long-term obligations.
Donna, I will just add in conclusion, simply that number one, the city of Long Beach is the city of Long Beach is not going anywhere and, uh, we fully expect it to thrive and continue to thrive, uh, as a result of this process. Number two, I think we're building on the progress that the city manager and the city comptroller have made in terms of progress on the annual operating budgets, uh, that they've, the, that, that they've sort of got close to, if not balanced, over the past, uh, 18 months or so. Uh, three, this is an exercise that's focused on ensuring, um, as, uh, as was mentioned earlier, uh, that all of its long-term liabilities are, are dealt with responsibly, uh, and contractually, uh, and consensually in terms of with the counterparties. Um, and it puts the city in a position where it can continue to invest in its operating projects and provide a, 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 an excellent lifestyle for, for the city, uh, but to do so in a financially responsible manner. Uh, so we, we fully expect, expect to be transparent as we work through this process and report in due course, uh, when we're ready.
I, I just want to add to what Mo just said that, um, in, in addressing the, these long-term liabilities, it, it is sending a signal to the capital markets, uh, that, uh, the city, um, has a plan, um, bringing on, uh, professional advisors to address, um, how to, um, deal with these liabilities going forward. Doing nothing, um, uh, is not the signal, uh, that you want to send to the capital markets. And, uh, by, uh, addressing them and coming up with a plan of action, as I said, uh, sends that signal to the capital markets, which will allow the city to have access, um, uh, to, uh, investment dollars coming in, uh, that will allow the ci- city to grow and become, uh, prosperous for a citizen's dream.
Yeah. And John, John, just to finish that thought, it's, we're, like I said, we're going to continue all the, uh, consider all of the options. As Maria indicated, um, bankruptcy is not what we are focused on today. I just want to be very clear. It is, it, it is an option of absolute last resort. We're not foreclosing any, any tools that the city may have at its disposal. Um, but just to be clear, uh, any headlines around bankruptcy or a- any sort of, uh, dark news, uh, is definitely well premature and probably wrong. So I, I think we should be very, very clear about that, uh, that this is about dealing with the long-term liabilities in a responsible manner, which allows the city to continue its services.
Okay. And then the last thing that I have to add is that in 2019, the city was number one. It's the most fiscally stressed city in the state with a marking of 85. Unfortunately, we are still number one, but we are doing better. We dropped down from 85 to 77. So that shows that we are working hard to move in the right direction so that we could get off that list. And that is not something that we are striving to be number one in. And this will definitely help us. Um, at that, at this time, John, I will turn it over to you, um, for questions from any of the legislators.
All right. And just, uh, I think one thing that's important to, uh, two things probably important to point out, that, that drop in our fiscal stress score from 85 to 77, you were only here for four months of that time. So you got this, you got us down seven point, you got us down 10% in four months, your first four months here. So that, that, that says something. Uh, the other thing I think it's worth pointing out is until a few days ago, our debt was actually $600 million. But because we were able to settle the I-Star lawsuit at no cost to the taxpayers, that, that reduced $100 million of our, of our potential debt there. So, um, uh, two, uh, two things I think are, are worth noting.
Thank you, John, but I work with a team of people, so I'll take your comment back to the team.
Okay. So, um, with that, I guess I'll, uh, I'll offer again any of our, uh, dignitaries, if they have any additional, uh, comments they'd like to make now that they've, uh, seen a little bit more of the information. Again, uh, this is not the solution. This is the work to come up with the solutions. So, but with that, um, if anybody wants to say anything before we move on? Denise?
Assemblywoman, sorry, and then followed by Assemblywoman Miller.
Okay.
Okay. Missy could go before me. She's senior to me. All right. She's from the state. Missy, you go.
That's fine. You're, you're, no offense, but you're way more senior to me and when it comes to politics in Long Beach. Um, I, my question is basically, you know, this sounds great, this financial restructuring. Is there any, um, idea, any hint as to how, you know, Donna had mentioned that they're not, um, laying people off, that they're not reducing services. So exactly how does one go about restructuring with this enormous debt without, um, affecting, give the functioning of the city? Uh, is it a matter of raising taxes or is it, how, how does that play out? If that's a fair question.
Maria?
Well, the, the, the first thing is to have a realistic assessment of what the liabilities are, when and how they can be paid and what the options are for restructuring, when and how they can be paid. Um, it's often a situation where you can come to a consensual solution to modify payments, um, to do something that makes sense with the city's ongoing budget. There could be refinancing, um, reprofiling, um, and really just looking at what the revenues of the city are, the pockets of revenues, making sure that the city is taking steps it needs to, to ensure that the revenues are used appropriately. Um, and really just making sure that all constituencies are involved in, in the analysis and the solution. Um, there could be, it, solutions involving, um, business leaders in the city. There could be solutions involving the bondholders. Um, so there are a host of, of tools available and we're really just getting started in our work. Um, we appreciate the support that we're seeing from, from, um, you know, the political side here because it, it is really important. There are solutions that involve, um, the state and local governments, which we would look into and, and really present. Our, our goal is to present options to the city and to show the city the pros and cons of the different options and, and allow them to make a decision on how to proceed.
So if there's a big push, um, to try to do this through, uh, increasing revenues, uh, and, and, you know, through business and, and other, um, you know, avenues throughout the city, um, to increase revenues through that way, not through just the taxpayers.
The goal is, is that, that's, that's right, is not to, it, it, to make this all about the taxpayers. That's correct. Thank you.
And to add to that, I mean, the, the focus is going to be on debt modification, debt adjustment. And how, how do you achieve that in a consensual way? And, um, um, so it's not a question of if, but how. Uh, because it is a very large number and it needs to be addressed and it needs to be, uh, somehow adjusted or modified. And that's where we're going to be going to work to figure out creative ways where, uh, we can convince, uh, the various constituents, uh, holding, uh, these pieces of debt, uh, to engage with us, uh, and come to an agreement as to, um, uh, you know, modification or adjustment of that debt, which allows the, uh, you know, the city, uh, to, uh, uh, carry the debt going forward in a sustainable, affordable way.
Okay. Denise, did you want to, uh, say anything?
Okay. Sorry, just a few, Missy covered a lot of the stuff that was, um, within my notes. But how long do you, do you, uh, Maria, how long do you anticipate that this would take? Is there a time limit or is it open-ended?
We're hoping to move quickly, um, and to have some analysis for the, for the city in the short term.
Okay. So, um, and then, uh, obviously then you do look back at past practices that the city had, uh, participated in, you know, to look to see how we got here? Or do you just take it from here and then move forward?
Well, it's a little bit of both. It's important to know how we got here to avoid getting here again. So the analysis will involve more of the go-forward, but we do need to understand what the inputs were that, um, ended up in, in this situation.
Okay. And, um, you know, I, Senator Kaminsky had mentioned, and I remember like a couple of years ago with the payouts that, uh, we gave, you know, that I guess started a lot for us, a lot of this. But, um, that the state had offered $5 million to the city of Long Beach to do audit, audits to take a look at, um, you know, their financials. Um, I'm wondering if, when he said about that this may be able to help pay some of the fees for this, is that something that, i- i- am I reading this correctly or did I misunderstand what he said?
Um, this is Donna. You read it correctly. Um, I have been working with the state since I've been here. We send them the budgets. I talk to the Financial Restructuring Board, uh, I think it's Tim Ryan, at least once a month. Um, and so we're looking to see how, how they can maximize, how they can help us.
Okay. All right. So, you know, so hopefully then this is something that the state can help, help us moving forward, especially dealing with these firms. Uh, obviously they have a great reputation. And, um, you know, so, you know, I'm looking forward to see, to seeing what they do, uh, come up with, what type of solutions. So, and then, um, my last, and I guess, so then they would also look at, um, when we look at the debt and whatever they can restructure, you know, to hopefully maybe look to see, um, from other sources. I mean, I know that, uh, Congresswoman Rice had said, you know, the federal government can give some money, but I'm hoping that maybe they can also help, help us look, maybe they could find other places where we can secure funding under different, um, you know, different titles of funding sources. So, uh, in order to help alleviate some of this debt, so. But, um, good luck with everything. This is, um, it's a big moment for the city. And, um, you know, I'm looking forward to, uh, hearing what they have to say. And I hope, I hope they're the best for everybody. Okay? But thank you.
Yes, we will look, we will look at all potential other sources of funding, financing, uh, that can help alleviate the, the, the problems here.
Right. And, and Moshe, and you know that, uh, like even with where we, with the county, we have, uh, the NIFER Board and, and they've been helpful in helping to restructure and doing some creative things also with the county. So, um, you know, hopefully maybe there's something that you might be able to take a look at and say, whoa, we never looked, thought of this and let's, maybe this is something that we can use to help the city. So, all right. Thank you.
Exactly. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Donna?
Um, no, that's it.
Okay. Um, and, and I guess I'm kind of, I'd probably state in the obvious here, but you know, we, we're entering, uh, silly season here in Long Beach or sillier than usual. We have an election coming up, which means you will see every kind of weird distortion humanly possible about this on social media, you know, uh, rethink getting your news from social media. Just ask, just ask us. You know, as you see here, we're trying to lay out everything, all the details about this. Um, so everybody has a clear picture of, of what's going on. So, uh, just, uh, be a little skeptical about what you're probably going to read on, on social media. Uh, so with that, I guess, uh, I'll give one last call if anyone else, uh, any of our dignitaries had any comments. Okay. Seeing none. Dave, why don't we, since we just went through all the background information for items two and three on the agenda, why don't we move those up? So let's, let's reorder the agenda and do item two first, then three, and then one.
Yep, absolutely. Okay. Onto the regular calendar. We're going to start with item number two, a resolution authorizing the retention of M3 Partners LP.
Okay. Well, I think we just heard everything. We're going to hear, Donna, is there anything to add?
Um, the only thing I would say is that on the website, we have a section called transparency. Um, all contracts will be posted and within the next couple of days, the contract that you all will approve tonight will be posted in the transparency portal on the, on the website.
Okay. All right. So with that, are there any questions from the council members? All right. Seeing none. Dave, I'm going to assume we got questions from the public?
Yes. First is Kevin Heller.
Okay.
Hold on one second. Hello? Yep, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. That took a few minutes. Um, I guess the first question I, I have, I'm just curious why we brought this to a special city council meeting? We just had a city council meeting a week ago. There's another regular one coming up. Could it not have been at a regularly scheduled meeting? Anyone? I mean, my understanding is special meetings are.
Uh, Mr. Heller, the, the main reason why it was brought to a special meeting is because the depth of the information. When you take things to council meetings, it should be something that's, um, the council meetings actually should not be more than an hour, hour and a half. This needed to be, um, have, pay as much attention to it as possible. And special meetings can be called when we, at any time. Everything doesn't have to go to a council meeting. And so we, we chose, um, that we wanted to have this on the agenda so that people can answer questions, people can hear exactly what was going on, um, a- and as of such.
Okay, okay. Fair, fair enough. I just would ask in the future to give a little bit more notice. I just happened to stumble across this meeting a couple of days ago on, uh, your Facebook announcement, which
Okay.
I had to re, you know, kind of rejiggle my schedule to be able to be here. So move.
Friday?
The meeting was posted.
Posted Friday, just as we post all of our other meetings.
So to, moving on, uh, M3 Partners specializes in financial restructuring, including bankruptcy. So, you know, I, I would suggest that obviously one of the options on the table, if you're going to try to negotiate with counterparties, has to be that. Do, do we even qualify for bankruptcy under municipal law?
Um, Maria, would you like to answer that? Maria or John?
Yes, we do. We do. I mean, uh, there's, um, no question that.
Okay. Question, I guess, for the council. What is the cost of hiring M, of retaining M3? I mean, I heard Mr. Kaminsky say that, uh, the FRB might pick up the tab, but he also said they are going to vote on it on the spring. So it's possible they won't. Assuming they don't, what would the cost be for Long Beach?
That, this is Donna, Mr. Heller.
Yes.
The total cost is $1.5 million. And the, um, Senator Schumer's office also said that they would assist us in getting this paid. They did not want us to prolong this and so we are really looking, I, I can't say 100% that this will be paid through one of the, uh, one of the offices, if not through both.
Okay. Um, I'm just curi-, I, I, I looked at the, um, financials from 2019 on the transparency portal and I was focused on the condensed statement of net position. And there it said the net position was, uh, a negative 214 million with outstanding long-term debt obligations of 83 million. Um, so I'm getting confused. You're using.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You said the long-term, um, the, the total net position is a 214,000 negative?
214 million, yeah.
Yeah. So what did you say about the 80?
The, the, the long-term debt obligations at that time were 83 million, which I guess is irrelevant. Tonight you showed it was 128 million.
You're saying 2019?
2019.
Okay. If you turn to page 21 in the audit, total non-current liabilities is, uh, 271 million. I'm not sure where you're getting to.
Debt, debt obligations in long-term perspective, uh, the outstanding debt and outstanding long-term perspective obligations are two different things, right?
No, long-term liabilities are your total liabilities that you have to pay long-term. So that was 271. What you have to look at is that your total current liabilities is 62 million. And that 62 million typically, look, current liabilities means that they have to be paid. And that 62 million typically, current liabilities means that they have to be paid within a one-year period. Now you look at that 62 million and a budget of 83 million, what is your budget actually going toward? And so of that, you got 271 million, uh, in non-current liabilities and those are, are paid out over time. And the largest liability at that time was 131 million in OPEB, which is other, other post, post-employment benefits.
Right.
Right.
So, okay. It, just the last question I have on this particular resolution is, um, you've presented the, um, prospective financial obligations of about 460 million. But over that time period that you calculate those obligations, what is the expected revenue?
Well, the revenue comes in as the budget and, and if you like, Mr. Heller, you can come in and meet with Ina and I, we can go over it. The revenue that comes in, comes in based on the budget. So for example, if we say that our budget expenditures is $83 million, then that means that when we balance the budget, the revenue is $83 million. So our liabilities, those long-term that become current have to be paid out of that $83 million. That's where the problem comes in.
But I understand that, but if you say, when you do an analysis of where you are, your financial position, right? You say of 460 million in prospective financial obligations over some time period. I don't, you didn't present what that time period was, but.
Each one has a different time period.
If you had, let me.
It will tell you in the notes, each one, what the total time period is that each one has to be paid back.
Yes, but can you say, if, if you told me we have 460 million in prospective financial obligations over X time period, but we have $460 million in prospective revenue, I would suggest we don't have a financial problem. So what is the financial?
So where do you get?
What is the revenue, what is the revenue projections over that period?
So I guess where I'm confused, Mr. Heller, is that where do you get, we got 464 million? First of all, like.
You presented that tonight.
No, that's not what we didn't talk about 464 million dollars in revenue.
No, no. Financial obligations.
That's money that you have to pay.
I'm asking you what the revenue is that would offset that.
But the revenues, the revenues go to pay for the budget and to fund the budget. The question is not what the revenues are over the period that these liabilities have to be paid. The question is what are the available revenues after paying for the city's services during that period of time?
That's right. Right.
And so that is part of the analysis that's being done in connection with this process.
Yeah, just, just to add, just to add to that, the, the $83 million is the annual gross revenue for the city. Uh, and there is.
That is what I said too, that it was $83 million.
Right. So in, 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 you know, that goes to pay for all the services and obligations, uh, that, that the city provides. Uh, and then there's some portion left over for debt service, uh, uh, including both principal and interest. Uh, and when you layer in just, uh, Mr. Heller, uh, a judgment of the magnitude of 111 to 130 million dollars on top of that, which is an immediate issue, uh, that obviously to, to give you some perspective, uh, even leaving aside some of these other issues which, which were significant, uh, in, in 2019. So I think, I think the point of this exercise is to really go back and say, when you add in the $83 million of revenues, uh, deduct, uh, you know, what the ongoing uh, operating expenses are for the city. Let's say there's somewhere between five to 10, five to 10 to 15 million dollars. I'm, I'm not providing a number. I'm just giving you an order of magnitude, just so you're clear. So it's not that the entire $83 million is available services liabilities. It's only a fraction of that. Um, and, and the, the, the exercise we are undertaking will lay that out in a thoughtful, clear, objective and diligent way. Uh, at some point it will, we will come back and present that to the council, uh, and lay out what that is. That's exactly, your question is a very good one. That's the question we're actually, uh, embarking on a project to answer.
Right.
And that what I, I would suggest, um, team is that when we, um, uh, present, we need to present so that non-financial people can understand the finances. Mr. Heller's question was a good question, but thinking it from financial terms, we have to make sure that the non-financial people realize that when you see the long-term debt, that doesn't mean that if we're bringing in revenue every year, that that's going to pay that debt down.
No, all, all due respect, I have an MBA in finance.
Okay.
And what you've presented to me is one side of the equation. That's all I'm trying to get at. You've presented the obligations, but, you know, for example, I'm seeing real estate price, real estate prices are at all-time highs here in Long Beach. That has to imply that your tax base is going to go up. Is that enough? Is that enough?
Mr. Heller, your, your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. You'll have an opportunity again on the next one. I'm sure you'll be back. So, uh, all right, Dave, I see Roy just popped up, so he must be next.
All right, go ahead. On mute.
All right. Thanks. Um, Donna, I have to applaud you because, uh, having had so many clients in this type of situation, it's a tough decision to make, a very tough. And I'm sure you've spent a lot of sleepless nights over this and it's probably the only alternative we have right now. Um, I understand what you're saying. We basically have about 13 million in debt service right now. Our judgment alone is running a million a month. That's 12 million. There's no way you can pay off 480 million dollars without extra money. So, you know, I, I understand Kevin's question, but I, I also can see what you're saying. You just don't have the money to pay off the debt. But I do have one question. CMA, uh, we're paying $10,000 a month. Isn't that duplicative of what we're hiring these people to do? Is there a way we can save that money?
No, CMA is actually working with us, um, with the, so they are part of the group. They just did speak tonight. We're doing the five-year plan. Um, they help us to cut back on some of the expenses. They are picking up some of the work.
Okay. So that's saving us money with the attorneys?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, who's next, Dave?
Uh, John Ashmead.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Ashmead.
Actually, at this point, I sort of forgot my exact question, but, you know, I guess my thoughts are this. Is that, you know, there have been misrepresentations about the true financial condition of the city for as long as I've been paying attention, which started with Kevin Heller 10 or 12 years ago, uh, maybe 13 years ago. Um, and each administration has promised to tackle the tough issues. And, and then at best done some work on the margins while not tackling anything serious. Instead, um, what they've done, uh, as Kevin knows, is every year borrowed more money to pay off the shortfall in the budget. So I think it becomes pretty abundantly clear that we do not have the revenue base now, or everyone's taxes would have to go up dramatically to make any dent. And then we were hit with this Haberman judgment, uh, you know, which is from an action going back three decades and legal errors made 10 years ago, that basically is a gut punch to this city, uh, which was already rigged, the state's, um, most financially stressed city. Um, you know, to my mind, leaving the city administration in a position, um, where it, it can no longer pass the buck. Not that it has, but prior administrations have. And, and maybe that's sort of a silver lining, um, that there's no way to avoid fixing our financial mess uh, at this point. And I don't think there's any way to slip a surcharge onto our tax bills, which was done with the last $20 million judgment uh, a few years back related to an old super block related lawsuit. Um, I think that the judgment amount, uh, on top of our existing fiscal condition, uh, puts us in a catastrophic position. I'm not in the bond markets. I'm a restructuring attorney, but I have serious doubts that we could even bond that judgment. And if we could, I don't know how we'd pay for it. I think my taxes went up for the $20 million judgment surcharge, like three or $400 a year. Uh, if you had to bond another 120, I just don't know how that works for most people that live here. And value of homes itself, while it may increase the tax base, doesn't mean that people necessarily have the money to pay it. Um, you know, you guys came in on the heels of separation payout scandal, including the efforts by various city officials to cover that up. Um, you faced that, you faced COVID, the I-Star lawsuit that was dumped in your lap, and now you have this. I think you've done a great job working through the financial maze and shenanigans and opacity uh, uh, of the financial picture. You've stopped, as I understand it, the overpayments above contract rates since you guys have taken over, whatever it was 15 months ago, which.
Two, three minutes, Mr. Ashmead.
Uh, and so I just wish you, uh, Godspeed with this and think you should move as quickly as you can to try to figure things out, straighten out the city.
All right. Thank you, John. All right, Dave. Who's next?
Uh, Kathleen O'Leary.
Okay. Hello, Kathleen.
Um, okay. I have a couple of points. Um, first thing is, um, with the 1.5 retainer agreement, I guess that's what it is. Um, we're not being given any, uh, time limit on how long that lasts. And also we're not, there are no commitments that the state or the federal government are, are going to pay part of this fee. So that makes me a little nervous. Um, and in terms of looking through and analyzing it, um, it's been suggested before with the separation payments, probably going back 30 years. You know, the city knows who they gave them to and they know how much they gave. And, you know, a simple clawback of all or some of that money would be beneficial to the city. Um, so I, I would, I would point the, uh, M3 partners in that direction. I think that's a, that's an easy thing from the outside, just to start contacting people and saying, hey, you know, would you like to give us some of that overpayment back? And then the last thing I want to speak about, um, there are very simple ways for the city to increase revenue. Um, and they've not been moved on. Okay. We've suggested, um, parking meters. Um, there's been a bunch of suggestions that haven't been taken. I think simultaneously, as we're working to refinance or restructure our debt, we should give a little more attention about things that could bring more money into the city. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kathleen. Uh, all right, Dave, uh, do we have someone, anyone else?
Nope, that was all.
That was all. Okay. So why don't we move on to, uh, item number three, which is now going to be item number two.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the retention of outside counsel.
Okay. So it's basically the same information as before. So I'm going to assume Donna has nothing to add.
No.
Is that, okay. Uh, do we have any questions from the council members? Okay. And, uh, from the public, Dave?
Yes, Kevin Heller. Go ahead.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, it's kind of a repeat question, but what is the cost to Long Beach to retain Old Melvyn and Myers?
Donna? Repeat that, Mr. Heller.
The cost to retain, uh, Old Melvyn and Myers.
The, the total cost for both companies is 1.5.
Oh, okay. So I wasn't clear on that. I wasn't.
No, I'm sorry. You know what? I did make it clear earlier when I said 1.5 and we were talking about M3, it's for both.
Okay. Um, I, I would, my understanding of, uh, of a potential chapter nine filing, and, and I did imply before that that has to be one of the options if you're moving down this road, requires, um, sort of a good faith filing. And a big part of the, um, prospective financial obligations that you spoke of is the Sinclair-Haberman, um, lawsuit. Um, I don't think you can feign a bankruptcy filing attempt in, in an attempt to force a party to litigation. So I'm just curious where the Sinclair-Haberman, uh, lawsuit is. Are we attempting to negotiate that out of court? Is it, is it a foregone conclusion that that figure you put up on the slide is, is what we will owe?
Well, I just think we're, we're, we, we really want to comment about, uh, strategy in terms of, uh, negotiating, um, well, the requirements of chapter nine. Uh, I don't think your, your statement of the law is correct, but I don't think this is the time to really be addressing that, uh, at the appropriate, when and if we ever get to that point, we will, uh, review all the filing requirements that are necessary, but we're, we're just not there yet.
Okay. When I look at the, the statements that you've made, you know, we, we, we don't want to lay off people. We don't want to impact workers, but it seems that the debt obligations is a small part of what's outstanding. I'm just, I'm having trouble visualizing how you're going to facilitate a restructuring without sort of impacting services. It, it seems like it would have to be part of the equation.
Well, we're going to be, as we said, over the next, uh, over the short period of time that ensuing weeks, we're going to be looking at the debt obligations. You've got to start somewhere. And, um, we're going to be studying those obligations, researching it and coming up with strategies to modify, uh, those debt obligations in a consensual way. And then people from there, um, we can't, you know, in terms of coming to conclusions at this time, I, I just, I, I don't think it's, we're at that point.
I guess the last question I have then is it, is it going to be part of your analysis and process to attempt to renegotiate collective, collective bargaining agreements with unionized employees?
We're, we're just, uh, as Maria said before, we're taking a holistic approach. We're looking at all obligations and modifications and adjustments. And, um, you know, I, I don't want to pick on any one particular, uh, set or subset of obligations. Um, we're just starting the process. So at the appropriate time, we'll review everything, uh, when we're ready to go public with our recommendations.
And that was my last question on this resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Anyone else, Dave?
Yes, Kathleen O'Leary.
Welcome back.
Hi there. Um, I just have a question about, uh, what is the hourly rate if this company, uh, law firm has to go to court in, on behalf of the city?
We, we, we have a cap limitation on our fees. So the, the hourly rate really is, um, is not relevant. Um, uh, there is a, uh, a time, time limit on, on our, our retention.
Which is what?
Believe it's three months.
Oh, three months?
Yep.
Okay. So there's no separate charge if you're, have to litigate?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, anyone else, Dave?
That was it.
That was it. Okay. Let's move on to the next item.
Okay. Going back to the beginning of the calendar, item one is a resolution authorizing the settlement of the offset issues in the Haberman litigation.
All right. I'm going to assume that's Mr. Berrios?
That would be correct. Good evening, everyone. Um, I'll be brief, but to the point. Um, as everyone knows, because we've discussed it a bunch, uh, during this special meeting, there is a judgment against the city, um, in the Haberman litigation. Uh, what this resolution purports to do is, is that the attorneys have gotten together. Um, we had a, uh, a separate inquest scheduled from the original Haberman judgment, right? So if you recall, the Haberman judgment declared, um, the city was liable for 131 million and change, but also ordered a separate inquest beheld to determine, um, what offset the city was entitled to in the Xander litigation. The Xander litigation was a related litigation that settled before trial. So, uh, back in November, when we had our inquest, Xander was scheduled to also move forward simultaneously, but they settled before they went to trial, uh, for 25 million. So, um, the judge in this case basically said, you're going to have a hearing to determine how much of the 25 million you're entitled to, because I don't know how much that is at this point. So attorneys got together and have agreed upon 20.5 million dollars as an offset without setting foot in the courtroom. Um, needless to say, with, uh, I guess with the interest running on the judgment itself, um, and the cost of actually conducting the hearing with, uh, you know, with attorneys, uh, left, right and center, uh, it's our recommendation that the council pass this resolution authorizing us to settle the offset issue for 20.5 million dollars.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council members? All right. Seeing none. Dave, do we have any from the public?
Yes, Roy Lester.
Okay.
Rich, uh, just one question. How does that affect the interest that's already accrued?
Well, what it does is it just basically chops off 20.5 off the final judgment, you know, regardless of whatever that final judgment is. Um, naturally, uh, you know, litigation moves forward, right? The notice of judgment and entry has to come in and, um, the legal procedures have to follow from there.
So what I'm trying to figure out is the interest that has accrued. So our judgment will now become a 111 million dollar judgment? And the interest that was running will only be on that?
I imagine that would be a point of contention later on, but, uh, you know, the city's position right now is it's 20.5 off the top.
No, I know, but, you know, we've run a million dollars of interest a month. And so the 131 is right now a lot more than that. It's like about 140 or something. So I'm wondering, is the 20 taking off the 140, or is it taking off the 131?
Whatever the file, whatever the final judgment's going to be, Roy, is with the 20.5 offsets.
Okay, so we don't know. All right, thanks. Okay.
Okay. Anyone else, Dave?
Yes, Kevin Heller.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Heller.
Uh, when was this offset agreement reached? I guess that's Mr. Berrios.
What do you mean by when was it reached? I'm sorry.
Was it a week, was it a week ago? Was it yesterday?
This was a matter of, uh, days.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
No problem.
Dave, anyone else?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, so let's move on to the voting.
Okay, on to the voting portion. So item one is a resolution authorizing the settlement of an, of the offset issues in the Haberman litigation. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Troston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item two is a resolution authorizing the retention of M3 Partners LP. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Troston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
And finally, item three is a resolution authorizing the retention of outside counsel. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Troston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Who'll make a motion to close the meeting?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Troston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes. All right, folks, uh, since this is a special meeting, there's no good and welfare tonight, so, uh, thank you for joining us. And, uh, we will see you at the next meeting. Everyone, have a good night. Oh, and by the way, uh, just a reminder, this Saturday behind City Hall is the STOP program. Uh, what that is, is for those of you that maybe participated this past weekend in the, uh, paper shredding and the e-recycling, uh, that was so you could get rid of your papers that have been accumulated. What this is to get rid of basically your chemical waste, if you have old paint or chemicals uh, sitting around in your house, um, okay, Mr. McNally's gonna add.
Sorry, just Saturday is the bike auction, Sunday is the STOP program behind City Hall.
Sorry, Sunday.
Nice to have things going on again in the city.
Yeah, Saturday is the bike auction, and, uh, where we'll be, uh, uh, auctioning off bicycles that, uh, have come into the police department's possession. They were abandoned or things like that. Um, so, uh, if you need a bicycle, good, good opportunity to pick one up for cheap. Um, it's fun. So with that, uh, thanks for joining us, and we will see you next time. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.